Schools, Monday, April fourteenth at five o'clock. To order, may I have a roll call please?
Ms. Grizankowski.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Dodd.
Here.
Ms. Cotter.
Here.
I am present. Mr. Weisman.
Here.
We have a call.
Do we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda of the special board meeting as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the board meeting as presented.
All right, I have a motion made by member Dimick. Do I have a second?
Ms. Cotter will second that.
All right, Ms. Cotter has seconded it. Is there any questions regarding the agenda? Seeing none, may we have a roll call please?
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Ms. Grizankowski.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Ms. Caddell, we have no public comments at this time? All right. Next, closed session for the purpose of non-renewal of contracts. Do I have a motion to move to closed session?
Sure, I'll move. The Board of Education moved to a closed session for the purpose of discussing non-renewal contracts.
Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
All right, motion made by member Ryan, seconded by member Grizankowski. Any questions? Seeing none, may I have a roll call please?
Yep, Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grizankowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
And Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, meeting is adjourned for the purpose of closed session. Dr. Salau will be meeting in.
I'd like to call the board meeting of Huron Valley Schools to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Grisemkowski.
I'm here.
Mr. Demick.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Dodd.
Here.
Ms. Cotter.
Here.
I am present, Mr. Wiseman.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. If you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have before you the agenda for this evening's regular board meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented.
Motion made by Member Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Member Grisemkowski. There are no changes. Could I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grisemkowski.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is communications and reports, items from the Board of Education. Couple of things I do have. One is a comment that I present to all of you. As a school board member, we appreciate the members of our community who share their public comments during designated times of our meeting agenda. This is an important opportunity for the Board of Education to hear from the community. However, it is not a time for two-way communication. A regular meeting of the Board of Education is designated for the board to conduct the business of the Huron Valley Schools in open session. In accordance with the Open Meeting Act, comments that require follow-up investigation or communication will be handled by our superintendent, Dr. Slough, or a member of his team. There are two segments in this agenda for public comments, one in Section Three, the other in Section Seven. Fifteen minutes have been allocated in Section Three for public comments related to action or voting items or non-action items if time allows. The Board of Education will allocate more than the fifteen minutes allocated in Section Three so that all public comments on action or voting items may be heard in Section Three prior to the board voting on those items. All comments on non-action items will take place during Section Seven of the agenda, if not already heard, in Section Three. All speakers wishing to address the board must be present, and all individuals will be given an opportunity to speak. Each individual delivering public comments will have three minutes to share their communication. Individuals may only speak once and cannot share unused time with another person. A timer will be displayed on the screen so that individuals can monitor their time. Once three minutes have elapsed, the timer will sound indicating that public comment has concluded, and the microphone will be turned off in preparation for the next speaker. The individual, as I said before, must be present to share public comments. We ask that you share your name, address, and home school when possible before sharing your comments. Furthermore, we request that you refrain from name-calling. Comments must be related to school business and may not include personal attacks unrelated to school business. If you make such comments, the Board of Education President, myself, will, to the extent permitted by the First Amendment, interrupt or injure your comment time. If you plan to share public comments, please complete the form that's in the back of the room and give your form to Ms. Cadell, seating over at the left with her hand raised. Thank you for your professionalism and partnership. That being said, I would like to just take a moment to give an accolade out. I know on April twenty-eighth, we're going to have representatives from this group of individuals here in person. But I do want to point out, we take a lot of pride in being a AAA school district, academics, athletics, and the arts. The team that you see displayed here is our robotics team. And our robotics team really represents all of our high schools, and we have a great partnership with them. And when you think about robotics, you might think about academics, you might think about science, you might think about math, but truly, all of us on the Board of Education has had an opportunity to visit with them. And it's a great partnership. I'm totally amazed by the individuals that you see in front of you. The work that they do, the collaboration that they display, the knowledge, just kind of, actually for me, just kind of blows me away that these are high school students. And without the parents, and without their dedication, and without the sponsorship, this wouldn't happen. And I think it's important to note that this is really done on their own time. This is done after school. They represent all of our schools, our International Academy, Milford High School, Lakeland High School. They meet on a regular basis over at the Proving Grounds. It's one of the reasons also why we're developing and expanding our robotics and STEAM or STEM program, and why we're doing a lot of renovations at both of our high schools to provide some additional space. So I just really want to point out to you how involved this is, and really how it captures all three of what our core beliefs are as a school district, being a AAA school district. That all being said, a couple of weeks ago, this group of people, our HVS Hot Robotics Team, competed in the Michigan State Championship, which is an incredibly competitive event, and think about this, with a hundred and sixty-three teams participating across four divisions over the course of three days. We, as a school district, and they, as a team, are excited to share that our team placed first in their division playoffs and went on to win the state championship. The team also took home the Industrial Design Award, which celebrates the team that demonstrates industrial design principles, striking a balance between form, function, and aesthetics. This remarkable achievement reflects the incredible dedication, hard work, and teamwork of our students, mentors, administrators, and everyone who has supported them throughout the season. In just over a week, and in fact, they're leaving, I think tomorrow, for Houston. And at that point in time, they're going to Houston to compete against all the state champions in the world. So next Tuesday, or tomorrow, they're going to leave, and I think it's a three-day competition to Houston, Texas, for the first Robotics World Championship. A truly exciting opportunity for them to compete at the highest level and represent our school district on a global stage. I just couldn't be prouder of her, of this group, and I know our Board of Education is extraordinarily proud. I thought it was important that we're going to bring them in on the next board meeting, but it would be after the fact. And since they're leaving tomorrow, I thought this would be a great send-off for them, not only to be recognized, but for our community to recognize the hard work, the dedication that they displayed, and how
Like to call the board meeting of the Huron Valley Schools to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Grisemkowski.
I'm here.
Mr. Demick.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Dodd.
Here.
Ms. Cotter.
Here.
I am present, Mr. Wiseman.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. If you are able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have before you the agenda for this evening's regular board meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented.
Motion made by Member Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Member Grisemkowski. There are no changes. Could I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grisemkowski.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is communications and reports, items from the Board of Education. Couple of things I do have. One is a comment that I present to all of you. As a school board member, we appreciate the members of our community who share their public comments during designated times of our meeting agenda. This is an important opportunity for the Board of Education to hear from the community. However, it is not a time for two-way communication. A regular meeting of the Board of Education is designated for the board to conduct the business of the Huron Valley Schools in open session. In accordance with the Open Meeting Act, comments that require follow-up investigation or communication will be handled by our superintendent, Dr. Sala, or a member of his team. There are two segments in this agenda for public comments, one in Section 3, the other in Section 7. Fifteen minutes have been allocated in Section 3 for public comments related to action or voting items or non-action items if time allows. The Board of Education will allocate more than the fifteen minutes allocated in Section 3 so that all public comments on action or voting items may be heard in Section 3 prior to the board voting on those items. All comments on non-action items will take place during Section 7 of the agenda, if not already heard, in Section 3. All speakers wishing to address the board must be present, and all individuals will be given an opportunity to speak. Each individual delivering public comments will have three minutes to share their communication. Individuals may only speak once and cannot share unused time with another person. A timer will be displayed on the screen so that individuals can monitor their time. Once three minutes have elapsed, the timer will sound indicating that public comment has concluded, and the microphone will be turned off in preparation for the next speaker. The individual, as I said before, must be present to share public comments. We ask that you share your name, address, and home school when possible before sharing your comments. Furthermore, we request that you refrain from name-calling. Comments must be related to school business and may not include personal attacks unrelated to school business. If you make such comments, the Board of Education President, myself, will, to the extent permitted by the First Amendment, interrupt or injure your comment time. If you plan to share public comments, please complete the form that's in the back of the room and give your form to Ms. Cadell, seating over at the left with her hand raised. Thank you for your professionalism and partnership. That being said, I would like to just take a moment to give an accolade out. I know on April 28th, we're going to have representatives from this group of individuals here in person. But I do want to point out, we take a lot of pride in being a AAA school district. Academics, athletics, and the arts. The team that you see displayed here is our robotics team. And our robotics team really represents all of our high schools. And we have a great partnership with them. And when you think about robotics, you might think about academics, you might think about science, you might think about math. But truly, all of us on the Board of Education has had an opportunity to visit with them. And it's a great partnership. I'm totally amazed by the individuals that you see in front of you. The work that they do, the collaboration that they display, the knowledge, just kind of, actually for me, just kind of blows me away that these are high school students. And without the parents, and without their dedication, and without the sponsorship, this wouldn't happen. And I think it's important to note that this is really done on their own time. This is done after school. They represent all of our schools, our International Academy, Milford High School, Lakeland High School. They meet on a regular basis over at the Proving Grounds. It's one of the reasons also why we're developing and expanding our robotics and STEAM or STEM program, and why we're doing a lot of renovations at both of our high schools to provide some additional space. So I just really want to point out to you how involved this is, and really how it captures all three of what our core beliefs are as a school district, being a AAA school district. That all being said, a couple of weeks ago, this group of people, our HVS Hot Robotics Team, competed in the Michigan State Championship, which is an incredibly competitive event. And think about this, with 163 teams participating across four divisions over the course of three days. We, as a school district, and they, as a team, are excited to share that our team placed first in their division playoffs and went on to win the state championship. The team also took home the Industrial Design Award, which celebrates the team that demonstrates industrial design principles, striking a balance between form, function, and aesthetics. This remarkable achievement reflects the incredible dedication, hard work, and teamwork of our students, mentors, administrators, and everyone who has supported them throughout the season. In just over a week, and in fact, they're leaving, I think tomorrow, for Houston. And at that point in time, they're going to Houston to compete against all the state champions in the world. So next Tuesday, or tomorrow, they're going to leave, and I think it's a three-day competition to Houston, Texas, for the first Robotics World Championship. A truly exciting opportunity for them to compete at the highest level and represent our school district on a global stage. I just couldn't be prouder of this group, and I know our Board of Education is extraordinarily proud. I thought it was important that we're going to bring them in on the next board meeting, but it would be after the fact. And since they're leaving tomorrow, I thought this would be a great send-off. For them, not only to be recognized, but for our community to recognize the hard work, the dedication that they displayed, and how proud we are as a school district and as a community to have something like this occur. Because this is really, truly, a world championship. And this is done above and beyond a regular school day. They many times are there till nine o'clock at night working on this. And spend a lot of time, like I said, on their own, and I appreciate not only their dedication, but our community outreach, because it wouldn't have been done without the mentorships that they have. So it's a great opportunity for us to embrace them, congratulate them, and wish them the best of luck. So with that, we'll go on with our agenda, and the next on our agenda is recognition. Dr. Sala?
Yes, thank you, and I would invite Ms. Roppler to the podium this evening for recognitions.
So as you did mention, Huron Valley Schools loves to live on the accolades that we are a AAA school district. And so tonight, with the spring sports getting underway, we wanted to take a moment to recognize some of our athletes who excelled during our winter season. You may remember a few weeks ago, Lakeland Athletic Director Todd Miller introduced some of those athletes. Tonight, Milford High Athletic Director Jim Marzalak is here to recognize some of our other winter athletes who certainly deserve that special recognition as well.
Well, thank you for having us. Like she said, I'm Jim Marzalak, Athletic Director at Milford High School. And I brought with me three athletes from our unified boys swim team. We had four that I'm going to talk about tonight, but one of them wasn't able to be here. So I'm also going to give a brief summary of some of the things that we accomplished in the winter. Milford had a remarkable winter season filled with exciting achievements across multiple sports. The competitive cheer team were regional qualifiers for the sixth year in a row. The United Gymnastics Team qualified for the state championships. The downhill, the boys downhill ski team also qualified for the state championships. And we had one downhill female skier, Natalie Melody, that she qualified for the state championships. And then we had one wrestler, Ike Stuffed, who also qualified for the state championships. And they were kind of a prelude to what the swim team did. But the biggest highlights of the season came in the pool with our boys swim team. Joining us tonight is Nick Marinescu, Brendan Marshall, Tommy Shaw, and then Sam Campbell couldn't be here. They were able to finish seventh place at the state meet, even though we had only four swimmers in that competition. It was a record-setting season for these boys, as they broke a total of nine team records and five pool records. And if you don't know how swimming works, you could have team records that are better than pool records because they swam that event outside their own pool. So we keep both what the records happened at Milford and then what happens on the road as well. But as a 200 medley team, and these four were on these, all these relay teams I'm going to talk about, these four swimmers were on all four of those relay teams. As a 200 medley relay team, they broke the team record and the pool record with a time of 138.09. Sam Campbell broke the team 200 freestyle record with a time of 139.22. Brendan Marshall broke the team 200 medley record with a time of 157.72. Sam Campbell also broke the team 50 freestyle record with a time of 21.13. Brendan broke the team 100 freestyle record with a time of 46.46 and the pool record of 47.02. As a 200 freestyle relay team, they broke the team record with a time of 126.84, and they broke the pool record with a time of 128.05. Sam broke the team 100 backstroke record with a time of 49.95 and the pool record with a time of 50.28. Brendan also broke the team 100 breaststroke record with a time of 101.32. And as a 400 freestyle relay team, they broke the school record with a time of 310.68 and the pool record with a time of 317.28. And then with that being said, Brendan had another great accomplishment, as he was the first Huron Valley male swimmer to qualify in all 11 events for the Division One Swimming State Finals. So it was a great season for the boys swim team. Thank you.
Does the board have any comments or questions?
Any comments or questions? Thank you very much. Very impressive. I know I'm a swimmer, but I don't swim fast. All right? It's an achievement if I can go from one end of the pool to the other with my head up. So I appreciate it, and those times are incredible. So thank you very much.
I've had many conversations with our swim coach that, when I watched these guys practice, I would put swimming and wrestling is by far the two hardest sports to compete in on a yearly basis for all years of high school. These guys are practicing in the morning, after school, on breaks. They by far practice more than any of our other sports teams.
Yeah, I appreciate that, the fact that you brought up the fact that they swim before school, they swim after school, they swim all year long, and training is constant, so.
Correct.
Appreciate that, and appreciate the fact that not only, obviously, our swim team did marvellous, but all of our athletes, they truly are ambassadors of our community. And it's so important, because they do this above and beyond the regular school day. And they really get us out there as a school district. And I've been, had the pleasure to observe many of our athletes, and very, very proud of how they act, how they perform. And they truly are representatives of our community. So thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have school presentations. Dr. Sala?
Thank you. Yes. This evening, I have the privilege to introduce the proud principal of Spring Mills Elementary School, Mr. Bob Brazier. And Mr. Brazier, I'll introduce you, and you can go ahead and introduce all the folks that are here with you.
Well, good evening. I am indeed the proud principal at Spring Mills Elementary, Bob Brazier. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you just a very small fraction of what makes fourth grade truly great at Spring Mills. Specifically this evening, our focus will fall on traditions, both new and old, as you'll see in Grade Four at Spring Mills. I'm joined tonight by two top-tier educators, fourth grade teachers, Ms. Emily Lowe's and Mr. Seth Stern. They're two-thirds of our dynamic fourth grade team. And of course, eight very eager Spring Mills Sharks in costume, so that you can experience one of our greatest of all traditions. So here are four of the Grade Four traditions. Number one, fourth graders study key components of a market economy. And to drive home that, the idea of mass production, it has become a tradition in fourth grade to visit the Ford Rouge factory, and we're going to keep that tradition alive this coming Monday with a, or, I'm sorry, in May with a trip there. Now, number two on your screen, this happened just a little over a week ago. Fourth grade continued a very fun tradition of having a cookout to celebrate the Tigers' home opener. That was a blast. School smelled like hot dogs. It was great. Number three, that's a new one. Just a few weeks ago, we added that to the lineup. I'm still in baseball mode here, as you can tell. And that was a mock trial experience that I'll talk more about in just a moment. And then our fourth and final tradition that I'll speak to tonight is, of course, the moment we're all waiting for here, the Wax Museum, and I'll give you a little feel for that in just a second. First, however, a few words more about that newer tradition that is the mock trial. So we partnered with Oakland County Bar Association to bring that opportunity to our students. And on your screen are just a few of the photos from the day that the fourth grade spent at the county courthouse enacting a memorable simulation. So that was the first year, and definitely not the last year, that we'll do a mock trial. The benefits of a mock trial are so many, some of which appear on the screen there. Above all, though, it really just afforded the students a chance to learn about the judicial system, which is a fourth-grade social studies standard, by living it. That word "experience" there in orange is highlighted on this particular slide for a reason. The fourth grade team talks often about providing experiences for our students. That's an idea that's really resonated with me. Experiences will build not only enduring understandings, but they're also going to create lasting memories. Okay. We definitely made memories recently at our Wax Museum. So that's a longstanding fourth-grade tradition. Last week, we opened up the museum, if you will, during the day for our staff members and students, inspiring many future fourth graders in the process. And then that evening, our students' families filled the halls of the school for them to check out all the students' exhibitions. I think you'd agree, it's a really wonderful way for students to show their understanding of informational writing by taking part in this project. Okay, without further ado, we'll give you a little feel for the Wax Museum. I'm sure I could list a bunch of benefits of the Wax Museum, but I also think they'll become pretty obvious pretty fast, just by hearing a few sentences tonight. Our first speaker will be Zafira, as Cleopatra. Now she and the seven Sharks who will follow her are going to recite just the first three lines from their speeches. But note that most of the student speeches, and they have them largely memorized, are about five or six minutes in length. Tonight, we'll just hear the first three lines. Okay, so take it away, Zafira.
I would not betray my freedom. Hi, my name is Cleopatra. I am most famous for being clean. I'm clean. You came clean. You deserve my charm, beauty, and talent, and everything in nature.
Excellent. Okay, Jacob up next?
Everything negative pressure and challenges is all not proven with your eyes. Once in a while failure feels like determination cases. I'm extremely hopeful to win. I respond to all challenges. Hello, my name is Kobe Bean Bryant. I'm a pioneer of the model mentality. I'm most famous for being one of the greatest basketball players of all time.
Thank you.
I'd like to be clean and people told me if I don't see myself being the cleanest in this country. Hello, my name is Diana Francis Speckler. But people know me as Princess Diana. I am most famous for marrying Prince Charles.
Isaac?
Those who stand for nothing, ball, right? Hello, my name is Alexander Hamilton. I am famous for being one of the founding fathers of the United States of America.
Isaac?
Genius is one percent inspiration, ninety-nine percent perspiration. Hi, my name is Thomas S. I am most famous for being an electric light bulb.
Terrific. Casey?
I live in California, and in fact, it has many lives. Hello, my name is Jackie Roosevelt Robinson. I'm most famous for making a color barrier in American baseball.
Thank you. Elena?
I may become failed at face paint, but never fear. All the soldiers can say are like Parkinson and Alzheimer's. My claim is clear, I'm high on fire. But people know me as Fireball. I'm most famous for being a fighter than American soldiers.
Her?
Men fight wars, women won. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Rogers. Hi, hello, my name is Penelope S. I am most famous for shaving people fighting dispatch.
Thank you. Excellent. All right, so that's just a little flavor of the Wax Museum. Okay, thanks very much, everyone. Students, we can bring back your posters.
No, don't go anywhere.
Oh, oh, oh.
Don't go anywhere.
Don't listen to me.
Yeah. Board of Education, anybody have any comments or questions for our principal and/or our guests? Yes, number Dodd.
Okay, two-part. I love the traditions, and I'm so glad you're doing them and that the experiences are there. Teachers, it's really important to get kids immersed. And these, these fine young people are so immersed, I could barely tell. And the knowledge that they have of your parts, and the way you created your visual aids, everything. I'm so impressed. I want to know from two of you, if you can think of ways that you yourself are like the characters or the people from history that you're showing. Do you feel like you're similar to any of those characters?
Um, I play baseball.
There you go. Well, you picked a good character to study them, huh?
Yeah, money, money, money.
You like those Hamiltons, don't you?
What, Alexander Hamilton, what bill is he on? So you like $10 bills? Oh, okay.
We call them Hamiltons, right?
All right, who dares follow that?
That's right. Anybody else have any comments? We, as a board, had the opportunity to listen to a lot of their talk earlier tonight before the board meeting. So very impressed, the knowledge that you had, the diversity as it related to the various people that you brought. It was always, I always ask, well, what brought you to choosing that character? And it was really interesting about how they came up with those people. And I know that this board, we get pictures a lot of times, but I don't think we've ever had pictures of such famous people. So maybe we could have a picture?
That would be great.
All right? All right. Great, so let's go. Now, I always do this. Spring Mills Sharks, you can stay for the rest of the meeting, but at the same time, I'm going to go into short recess, and you can make a decision, parents and students. I know you have a school day tomorrow, but you could stay if you'd like. But if not, I'm going to recess for a few minutes so that you could leave. All right, we'll go ahead, and superintendent's communication.
Thank you. Yes, I just have one quick one. I just want to congratulate a couple of Huron Valley School students for earning the Oakland County Career and Technological Student of the Year Award. Actually, one of our very own who's in the back there, Lydia Fogelman. Lakeland High School won that accolade. Yes, nice job, Lydia. And yeah, Lydia, we often see her in the back of the room because she's also a student intern who supports our recording of our board meetings amongst other things. So we're just, we're so happy for you, Lydia, and incredibly proud of you. The Milford High School recipient is, many of us know, Gillian Empy. Gillian Empy is the student who won for Milford, and they will be recognized on April 28th. So we will not have Lydia with us that evening, because we have
So we will not have Lydia with us that evening because we have a board meeting. But just incredibly proud of these students for their dedication to career technical education and for, for winning these accolades. They are, they are not easy to be singled out and just, just very proud of them. I think there's a lot to be proud of in this school district. I think tonight is just evidence of that, from Hot Robotics to, you know, state record-breaking unified swim team to what an awesome representation of the fourth grade Michigan standards that are being taught. I love that Mr. Brazier tied it specifically to the standards that they are, are trying to accomplish in social studies, and the kids just did an incredible job, all the way to CTE. So there's a lot happening in the Huron Valley Schools. We didn't talk about the arts, it's about the only thing that didn't get recognized this evening, but we, we take advantage of recognizing the arts often because there's tremendous amount of opportunity for our students in the arts as well. So, so with that, Mr. President, that concludes my remarks. Thank you. And I bet you that under good and welfare, we even talk about the arts.
We will.
So, next, we have student leadership. Not only do our students perform well, but they are the reasons why we are here. And under student, student leadership, under our Teaching Learning Technology Committee, who is chaired by, which is chaired by Secretary Pistana, we listen to our high school students from our four high schools, and we have leaders from each of those schools. So I'm going to turn it over to Denise. I think there is a, one of our leaders that we listen to, that we, we listen to, not only listen to, but we get information from so that we can better serve our high school population. So with that, Ms. Pistana.
Excellent. So tonight, I am introducing Jake Burbank. He is one of our student reps from Lakeland High School, and he provides, as Mr. Wiseman said, lots of information for us, and we learn a lot about what's happening at the high school. I'm also going to congratulate him as co-salutatorian over there at Lakeland High School. So come on up, Jake.
Thank you for that, and I just have a few things to recap Lakeland's latest activities. This weekend, the theater program just finished a production of All Shook Up, which was well-attended by the community and involved over fifty total students. The HVS Percussion Ensemble was selected to perform at the Spring Honors Festival this year, and they only take four ensembles total from the entire pool of nominees, which totaled to about eighty-three, eighty-four. They will take the stage at Western Michigan University on Friday, May ninth, and perform at the Honors Concert at seven PM. As for student activities, nineteen students from Lakeland qualified for the National DECA Competition in Florida, which they will be taking off at the end of April. And the National Honor Society is starting a new tradition of a field day this year, which should be something. We'll see how it goes. I am the vice president of NHS, and we'll see. And then lastly, for academics, the, the virtual testing was the first year for that, and it went very well. Everyone actually thought it was much better than years past, including for students taking the tests and students at home. That's all I got.
Anything more, Denise? Thank you, Jake. Thank you for everything that you do on our behalf, and, and please pass on our appreciation and respect to all your, all your students. And I'm sure that that field day will go very well under your leadership. With that, I know the school day starts really early, so don't feel bad if you don't, we won't feel bad either if, if you leave right now.
I'll take my, I'll take my few-minute recess right now.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have no association communication tonight, so we'll move on to board correspondence. Secretary Pistana, any board correspondence?
No correspondence tonight.
Treasurer report, Treasurer Grzynkowski.
None this evening.
Next, we have reports from board committee, executive committee. The committee met on April eighth at twelve-thirty PM at the administration office. Meeting was called to order. Present were myself, along with members Dodd, Pistana, Dr. Sala, Ms. Winger, and Ms. Cadell. There were no one absent, there were no public comments. The agenda included a review of tonight's meeting agenda, school safety. We discussed the upcoming quarterly safety meeting, which was held at, on April eighth at six o'clock at Heritage Elementary. I will say that it went extraordinarily well. Appreciate Scott's expertise as it relates to cybersecurity, and he, he presented that to the committee, and I know the committee appreciated and had a lot of good questions. We also had a discussion regarding the restructuring of the Special Ed Department, along with conversations about the budget, what we know and what we don't know. There's a lot more that we don't know than we know, and we had a discussion regarding that. We also had a additional special ed update from Dr. Sala. We had a thorough discussion about junior kindergarten, and we'll continue having that discussion along with projected class size throughout the district, specifically in the elementary area. We also had conversations regarding redistricting, construction update, middle school planning, along with various board policies and administrative guidelines that were updated that will be presented tonight under, under new business. There were no other items. We adjourned at two-ten, and our next meeting will be April twenty-second at the administrative offices at one o'clock. TLT Committee, Secretary Pistana.
Yes, TLT met on March eighteenth at the administration building. Meeting was called to order at four-oh-four. Present were myself, Mr. Dimick, Ms. Cotter, Mr. Taverneir, Dr. Sala, Mr. Lindberg, Ms. Bjorkman, Mr. Endicott, Ms. Thompson, Dr. Nemeth, Ms. Horwitz, Ms. Chastain, Ms. Miska, Ms. Rivers, and Ms. Tallon. There was no public comment. Under unfinished business, we, the committee recommended the updated Board Policy Fifty-five Hundred to appear as new business at the meeting tonight. Under new business, there was discussion about positive behavior interventions and support. Ms. Rivers provided the committee with an update on the district's PBIS program. PBIS focuses on supporting students by preventing, teaching, and responding to tier-one behaviors with clear routines, expectations, and teacher support. This approach ensures consistent expectations are integrated into daily practice. Under new business, we talked about Section Thirty-five J, the grant purchase. Ms. Bjorkman provided an update on the grant purchase for independent elementary classroom reading materials from BookSource. This purchase will provide students greater access to books that are ability and context appropriate. Using the Thirty-five J Grant Funds, HVS Elementary Educators will receive between fifty to two-hundred books, with a total of forty-six thousand books for two-hundred-and-seventy-five educators. The committee supported this purchase to appear as new business at tonight's meeting. Then we talked about math expressions renewal. Mr. Lindberg provided an update. The three-year renewal includes student workbooks and Think Central subscriptions. The committee supported this purchase and will appear as new business tonight. And then the next thing was a computer purchase. Mr. Endicott gave an update on the planned summer refresh of Chromebook, desktop, and laptop computers that have reached the end of useful life. The committee also supported this purchase, and it will appear as new business tonight. We had this, no strategic plan updates, no specific safety and security updates, and we did not have student leadership at that time. We adjourned at five-fourteen, and our next meeting is tomorrow, April fifteenth, at four o'clock at the administration office.
Thank you very much. Finance and Operations Chair, Treasurer Grzynkowski.
Finance and Operations met on Wednesday, April ninth, at eight-oh-four in the administration building. Present were Mr. Wiseman, myself, Ms. Ryan, Dr. Sala, Mr. Van Gauthen, Mr. Rebe, Ms. Kerrigan, Ms. Maruskin, Mr. Endicott, and from Clark Construction, Ms. Timberlake, Mr. Maxwell, and Mr. Miller. In addition, Mr. Weinrot from TMP was available. There was no public comment. We do not have anything this evening for the consent agenda or unfinished business. We do have new business. Bid Pack Thirteen furnishings for Lakeland, Milford, and White Lake Middle School. The committee reviewed the recommendation letter from TMP Architecture, identifying seven bidders and their amounts. Lakeland High School total bid was a hundred and one thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and two cents. Milford High School's total bid was almost the same, just six cents instead of two cents. And while, and White Lake Middle is, total bid amount is a hundred and three thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-four cents for a total bid pack of, for Bid Pack Thirteen of three hundred and six thousand, a hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-two cents, plus a ten percent contingency for a total of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Administration will seek approval at our next board meeting, April twenty-eighth, and that project is funded from the Twenty Twenty-three Capital Projects Fund. We also discussed the Brooks Center easement, which is coming before the board this evening. The committee discussed Huron Valley, the, the contract between Huron Valley and the White Lake Hill LLC improvement easement. Administration will seek approval on April twenty-eighth at the board meeting. This is bringing water to the Brooks Center. Board policy update, Policy Eighty-five Hundred. The committee discussed Board Policy Eighty-five Hundred updates and will be seeking approval at the April twenty-eighth board meeting. Safety and security updates. Mr. Endicott, Director of Technology, provided a comprehensive overview on the district's ongoing and upcoming cybersecurity initiatives. It was a thorough and very interesting presentation, and I appreciate the work that Mr. Endicott and his team does to keep Huron Valley safe, as I told him, from bad actors. So thank you very much for that work. In addition, we had updates on our bond construction. Mr. Maxwell from Clark's Instruction discussed all of our contingency contingencies that are left for each of our bid packs, and he provided construction updates for Bid Pack Thirteen and Fourteen, showing us progress photos of Lakeland High School and White Lake Middle. In addition, we discussed the administrative, the administration building relocation. The committee discussed timelines for the project, including current plans for the bid to be out on the street by May fifth, approval in July by the board, with demo beginning in the summer. Our next meeting will be on Monday, April, that doesn't make sense. The next meeting regarding the administration building will be on Monday, April twenty-first, and the committee intends to review revised furniture layouts and product selections. I think that's supposed to be Wednesday. Is that correct?
Right.
Wednesday, April twenty-first?
It's Wednesday.
It's, okay, so that's with the, sorry, don't mean to be rude. Middle School Steering Committee updates. The committee discusses timelines. Principal meeting took place Friday to discuss the main office design space, following up meetings with the focus groups, and they, those will be discussed, those will be established, and our next steering committee meeting will be on Monday, May fifth. We do not have any future discussion items. Our meeting adjourned at ten-forty-two AM. Our next meeting is April twenty-third at eight AM at the administration building, and as always, I hope to see you there.
Thank you very much. Next, chairperson Dodd, communications, marketing, and legislative.
We have not met since our last board meeting, and our next meeting is actually after our next board meeting, which is April twenty-ninth at two-thirty in the administration building.
All right, thank you. Ms. Cadell, public comments, do we have any? Do we have any public comments on action items? There's two, I believe, action items. Seeing none, consent. We only have one item under consent, which was the approval of the minutes from the last board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move that we approve our consent agenda as written.
All right. Motion made by Member Cotter, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Grzynkowski. Any questions? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Grzynkowski.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
We have no items under unfinished business. We have a number of items under new business. These will all be presented except for J and K, where there'll be a vote on those items tonight. The other ones, this will be first presentation, and we'll have an opportunity to review them and ask any questions to the specific individuals. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sala as it relates to A through I.
Do you want me to?
Whatever you'd like to do.
Oh, that's a first, okay. So let's start with A, so Board Policy.
Good place to start.
Board Policy Thirty-nine dash two. So this is one of our routine updates, but I, I think it's important just to take a minute or two and describe for the listening audience how Board Policy comes into existence. Interestingly, and, and the reason why I'm even mentioning this is because as we were starting the board meeting, Ms. Grzynkowski leaned over to me and said, "These look like basic language changes." And, and she's right. Policy can come to the board for a variety of different reasons. The board actually hires a policy-writing firm, and they have attorneys on their staff. And these attorneys are constantly paying attention to changes in the legal landscape to ensure that our policies align with any changes in the law. And so we, they, the board receives policy changes for a variety of reasons. One, probably the most obvious, would be a change in the law, or to be compliant with the law. Two, might be grammatical changes. This sounds better, and we have people on our staff that are constantly reviewing these policies, and they're going to make minor modifications and suggestions to the board for adoption. Three, it's the board's purview to change policy anytime that they choose to, to change policy, so long as it's compliant with the law. And there's a lot of opportunity for board preference around certain practices. So should, should this role and responsibility be the superintendent's? And should that be the final word? Or should that actually go to the board in a closed session before it's the final word? Those are the sorts of conversations that the board has amongst and between one another when they're reviewing policy revisions. And then ultimately, before our board takes action on any policies, we have what we call two reads. So this evening, letter A, Thirty-nine dash two, Board Policy Update, is the first read. So for many of our board members, it will go to a committee, but then it will go to the full board that is not specialized on that committee for review. And then the full board has two weeks to review and ask questions, and then we take the questions that were asked, and we provide the responses to the entire board. So the reason why you had a packet of policies at your, at your, your seated station today is because, because Ms. Ryan's an overachiever, and she already read all the policies from when she got the packet on Thursday, and she identified a few things that we needed to make some modifications to. So pay attention to the ones that were sitting at your station because they were updated already from the policies that you received on Thursday. So I just wanted to provide an update for our listening audience and our community. There is a rather detailed process that we follow before we even get to this point where we're, we're asking the board to review these policies. But we will be asking the board for approval on April twenty-eighth, and we will reflect any changes or answer any questions the board has before then.
Dr. Sala, I appreciate the thoroughness of your conversation as it relates to the, the process, as it relates to the policy. Policy is something that is one of the hallmarks of being on, on, on a school board and one of our responsibilities because that's something that we are elected to, to follow. At the same time, I think it's important to note that these policies are out on our website, that they're out there for people to look at, very easy to access. I think it's also important to note that while these policies are in place, there is administrative guidelines. And those administrative guidelines are how the administration is going to follow the policies of the board. While those are not things that are brought to us for a vote, our, our administration brings them to subcommittee level for us to have an opportunity to have conversations. And I know that we do that, and those are also out on our website because that is the steps that administration is responsible for doing, and one of the responsibilities of our superintendent to make certain that the policies are put into place, and these administrative guidelines are the practices to make certain that that. to make certain that the policies are put into place, and these administrative guidelines are the practices to make certain that that occurs. And I, for one, as a board member, appreciates the fact that uh that our administrative team brings that to the subcommittees for us to review them, to have input, because it's really your responsibility to make certain that those things happen, that there's guidelines in place for policies, but I it is above and beyond, and and I know from my perspective how much I appreciate the fact that we have that opportunity to review them.
Thank you. Yes, it's important, because obviously, as an administration, we want to make sure we hear the voices of our board members who represent the community, and if there's a concern about the way with which we're executing something, it's a great opportunity for us to to talk through uh whatever that specific situation might be, and and sometimes it leads us to to make some tweaks and some modifications, because it just doesn't make sense for our community. That's what's so powerful about our our subcommittee meetings, is a lot of times we get some insights or feedback that uh you know, we may not have been thinking of, and it may cause us to go in a totally different direction. I think that probably happens at just about every subcommittee meeting, so as Ms. Grizankowski shared, she'd love to see you there. We have lots of great conversations in those subcommittee meetings. So with that, um I think we can move on to item B thirty-five J elementary classroom library purchase, and I will ask Mr. Taverner to to uh be the advocate on this one.
Well, as you heard earlier in the TLT committee report uh from Ms. Pastana, we had a number of items for new business this evening, so we're going to start with actually an exciting uh opportunity we have for us. So I'm going to introduce uh Ms. Jennifer Bjorkman, our Director of State and Federal Programs, who will talk to us about the grant opportunity we have tonight.
Great, well, thank you, everyone. Um as you know, we've been here a few times talking about um the grant thirty-five J, so we do have just a couple of reminders. Um section thirty-five J is an early literacy grant uh that is state-funded. We received over a million dollars, and with all grants, there come some compliance requirements. So uh we are to provide professional learning for all pre-K through five educators in the science of reading, uh develop and continue to develop our comprehensive literacy plan, align our assessments, and then um ensure compliance with getting everyone um trained and have our literacy assessments and uh curriculum listed, which are all listed in Atlas on our curriculum, or excuse me, on our website. So we've come to you before with several items for literacy grant funding from the state grants thirty-five A and thirty-five J. Uh you can see, we now only have two areas that are highlighted. Those are the last two areas we'll be coming to you for approval. You'll be excited to know that there are grants thirty-five M and N that will be coming, so uh we're excited to see what those will entail, and those will align with the new dyslexia legislation. Uh so tonight, we are coming to you to talk about abundant reading material for students in pre-K through fifth grade, and we are also going to talk about some catch-up readers as well. And this just kind of gives you a high-level overview of all the things that have been happening, happening literacy-related uh throughout the school year, and we've come to you several times this year for um to receive approval for funding of these items. So you can see around the bottom right now, we're looking at professional learning and libraries, and we're looking for the purchase of um classroom libraries for our educators. So per section four thirty-five J um in our grant, what we asked for, what we received approval for is to purchase additional and abundant reading material to support independent reading at all grade levels. Um so these resources, um Ms. Misca will talk about the process we use to select these resources. We we are including decodable resources, a variety of texts with positive representations, and then several high-interest texts that will um, you know, get the kids' interest and engagement for reading. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kathleen Misca, one of our teacher leaders, and she's going to talk to us about the process and why we are receiving these classroom libraries.
One of the first questions we might ask are why are classroom and office libraries so important? Uh we have, of course, wonderful media centers in our all of our buildings, uh huh, but the power of a classroom library or an office library for some of our ancillary staff and our administrators is its proximity to students, the frequency with which they can access those materials, they're there all the time, right next to them, and that when a a teacher notices that a student has a need for a new text, for um a a way to dive into some some background knowledge that they maybe lack or would benefit from gaining, it's immediately available to them right there um in their classrooms. This allows us to build momentum for our student readers. Success in one book builds on success in another book and builds us into wonderful readers, and that we're able to then customize these resources by student ability and their different contexts for use so that we have the right books in the right places um at the right time. So we're very, very excited about these opportunities. This huge purchase that uh Ms. Bjorken Bjorkman mentioned um has been filtered through our book selection procedures covering independent and classroom library use. So these texts were selected, giving consideration to student age and reading level to represent a wide range of genres and topics and reading levels for our students in all of these different contexts, um and they were recommended by our partnership with the company Book Source, which are who are experts in classroom library curation. Part of our parameters for selecting independent and classroom libraries is to receive those kind of external reviews on texts in order to narrow the field of why of all of the books that we could possibly choose. And then these lists that were suggested to us by this company um were reviewed by committees within Huron Valley um from each receiving educator group. So that might have been, for example, a group of three social workers, um members of our K-five ELA committees, um in some cases, whole cohorts, like our whole elementary art cohort chose to review their list. Um and we kind of did that review um in a couple of different ways based on the needs and availability of um our educator colleagues. And I wanted to say something really briefly about this partnership with Book Source. Um it really is a fantastic opportunity uh to be able to work with one company to source from over two hundred publishers uh with these respected reviews, because this is a huge, huge, huge purchase. Um working with Book Source also gives us some support for storage of, in some cases, hundreds of books per educator. Labeling um books as identifying them as having been purchased with these grant funds is done by the company, so teachers are not taking time to stick labels on their books when they have plenty of things to be doing. Um and they'll also ship directly to our buildings, so it we don't get kind of a bottleneck at our warehouse, and they're boxed by educator for um easy sorting once they arrive there. So some huge advantages um in working with this company. And I wanted to give you a snapshot of how we broke down um the different library resources and kind of target points depending on on role. So you'll see that in this list, we have both non-controlled texts and controlled texts are decodables. Um so students need experience with not just highly-controlled decodable texts, as we've come to you with purchases before, but also in non-controlled texts, kind of your your run-of-the-mill picture book or or chapter book, um so that they can gain proficiency with all kinds of of reading opportunities. Um and you can see that um we have different sets for our specials teachers, as well as for our special populations, our EL students, as well as for our admin and ancillary staff to have available for students in their offices to support students when they're in there with them in those spaces as well. Um it's important to note that each educator in a particular group will receive the same texts as the other educators in that group. So uh for example, all elementary music teachers receive the same set of books. We have consistency across the district. What this boils down to, as was mentioned um earlier in your your notes, is that two hundred and seventy-five educators will receive, actually, in our latest tallies, closer to fifty thousand books through this purchase, which is just an incredible um amount of of resources available to our students in really immediate and powerful ways.
And so we know today is the first um new business, so we know we'll be back for unfinished business next time, but we would like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the thirty-five J elementary classroom libraries uh to support all students and educators at the elementary level. Thank you, and are there any questions?
Questions? Yes, Amy.
Hi, this is my favorite topic ever. Um and I had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Misca about this um last week, and I guess I just have a couple of questions. This is fiction and nonfiction, correct? You said multiple genres, so.
Yes.
We had a conversation about fiction, too.
Yeah.
Um and uh if I'm doing my math correctly, it's approximately a hundred and eighty books per teacher. Does that sound about right?
Or per?
Go ahead. But the number of books varies slightly depending on the educator's role. So classroom teachers in um our grades JK through five will receive the greatest volume of books because of their contact point with students. So um and our admin and ancillary staff will receive the the smallest number of books, around um fifty titles. So it does vary considerably depending on the use case.
I love this. I just love this. Um my only request is um I know this particular grant is specifically for early literacy, um elementary school literacy. But the third-grade reading act within, and our kids are now in eighth grade, um if we have grant money, please consider what's next for those middle schoolers and high schoolers that kind of miss the science of reading. And even, I'm sure, we have sixth and seventh graders that didn't have quite the same experience that our elementary school kids now are getting, um and the resources that we have and and the education that our educators have. Um if if there's a way for us to um expand that out, uh that is my, that's that's my dream at this point. It probably will not be enough for my daughter, but somebody's daughter, somebody's son, will be impacted by this. So I would say, continue to do your good work. You know, I I love speaking to you about this. I love the work that you've done. I've said it again, I say it a lot, I'll say it again. We are, we are so far along the literacy curve um with building those foundations, and I'm so thankful for the work that you do. I'm thankful for what TLT brings to the table every single day, and I appreciate um what this particular um what this particular buy can do for elementary schools, so thank you.
Thank you.
Laura?
I uh, that ninety-minute literacy block and the access to books right then and there, and also, it makes certain books really sought after, and I know a lot of kids really, ooh, you know, this person read it, now I really have to, I think it's so important. Now, I know a lot of our elementary teachers have varying levels of space in their room, and also many of them already have collected pretty massive libraries. So I guess my question is, more books, yay, but are we also looking at more storage and ways to make sure that we are able to keep this nice and um and organized? Because I know I I'm picturing rooms I've been in where there are already hundreds of books, which, in my opinion, millions of books, you can never have too many, um but making sure that we can organize them so we're not piles of books on the floor all over the place.
So the purchase uh through Book Source does include book boxes, um and that we can fund through our our grant purchase, but additional storage materials that we will need will have to come through through general funds, so we'll be back to you for for that at another time.
Any other comments?
I think it's interesting to note within your background, it says, it says here, "As part of our ongoing work in early literacy supported by section thirty-five J grant, all elementary educators have recently participated and will continue to participate in professional learning on the science of reading." We hear that a lot at the federal level, the science of reading, the science of reading. And I, I'll use the phrase ditto as it relates to both what Amy and and Laura just said as related to this, but I also want our public to know the how defined the process was from the very start as it relates to thirty-five J in the science of reading. I I agree wholeheartedly. We are so far ahead of the curve as it relates to that. And it's one of those comments that I heard numerous times in our vibe in the valley as it relates to the science of reading and in taking best practice and making certain that all elementary educators are participating, because it's it's learning how to read and then what you're reading and assimilating that into facts and in in knowledge. Question I have, we're doing all of this work, this is categorical. Categorical funds are specific in nature, they go away. Sustainability as it relates to this is a concern that we all have a support. We're doing all of this now, but next year, we're going to have, unfortunately, people retire, move on, and we have new staff. What's the plan as it relates to bringing people on board as it relates to the science of reading that are going to be new teachers to Huron Valley?
Sure, we've recently, it is part of the new educator orientation, you know, Mr. Lindberg and I and our team with Jennifer Hollander have been discussing how do we continue to make sure all of our new educators, as they are coming in, are being trained um in the science of reading that we use. The company we have worked with for professional learning, the Reading League, um they offer high-quality uh professional learning. Um they can do it one-on-one, they can do it small groups, so um we are looking at op- opportunities for our new educators.
Because it is an expectation. It, I mean, this is what we are.
And we're hoping that universities and colleges are catching up, too, as well, so that.
Right.
Educators are getting these um learning experiences.
But it is so important that we continue to provide that that in-service, that staff development.
Yes. And and we are in the process of working through adopting a new curriculum, so there will be much professional learning that goes along with that as well. And the new curriculum will be science of reading aligned.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep.
Uh this is the first read. If we don't have any other questions right now, we have two weeks to review. And if you do have any questions, we'll turn them over to Dr. Sala, who will get the answers for us.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, we've got math expressions, and I will turn that over to Mr. Taverner.
So again, uh next opportunity is uh a chance here to renew uh our elementary math resource, math expression. So I'm going to turn it over to uh Mr. Martin Lindberg, our Director of Curriculum Development.
Good evening. Um I was just sitting there, and I was thinking, what what is the first sign of spring here in Huron Valley? Is it that robin that you see outside uh when the weather breaks? Is it uh opening day for the tigers, or is it the Masters we many of us watched this weekend? No, it's TLT coming before you, asking you to approve resources for next year. So we had Jennifer and Kathleen come before you, and now Kristin and I are coming for before you to talk about elementary math expressions. So as we've said in our TLT subcommittee, um lots of things coming over the next few months, and and you know the end of the school year is near as we start gearing up for this and getting ready for next year. So just a little bit about um elementary math expressions. Uh this is a resource that we've been using in Huron Valley for many years. Uh before we start any discussion uh about math about math expressions or any math, we always want to send out this reminder about our JK twelve math vision. And uh just a couple of things, it's longer paragraphs, but uh just a couple of things to point out. Just a reminder that the curriculum is aligned to the Michigan's uh standards for mathematics. We want all students to be in get actively engaged. Uh variety of assessment methods are used to monitor student understanding. And then we want students to demonstrate learning and take ownership of their progress. And we always have differentiating supports to meet all students where they're at. And so that's kind of, again, a a a vision that we look at, whether it's at the elementary level, whether it's at the high school level in Huron Valley. So uh a little bit about elementary math and and our timeline in this district. Like I mentioned earlier, we've had math expressions for some time at this point. Um we're actually on the twenty-eighteen copyright right now. Uh we've we've been in that copyright for the last uh six years at this point, and so, actually, five years. And so uh we had renewed it for the first time in the twenty-twenty-one school year, and and so we're coming to you for a second renewal here for a three-year period. And what's important to note is uh over this three-year period, uh we're going to be doing something called a global core review with our elementary math, where we're going to start looking at our uh elementary laugh uh math holistically and really starting to uh look at what do we think we want to go after this over the next three years. So again, just something to be aware of. Uh math expressions uh is a is a very strong resource that that we've been very happy with in Huron Valley, but it's something that uh every ten to twelve years, we do a global core review on all our uh curriculum areas, and so elementary math will be coming up in this next three-year window for that. I'm going to have uh Kristin talk a little bit more specifics about the resource itself, and then I'll I'll wrap it up from there.
Thank you for inviting us back to talk about this math expressions renewal. And with the renewal, we know that some key pieces of our math expressions curriculum we already have in our classrooms. So we already have our teacher um teacher manual. have in our classrooms. So we already have our teacher, teacher manuals. We have many manipulatives. We have Black Line Masters. So those wouldn't be part of this renewal. What we would be renewing or purchasing would be those consumable pieces. So student workbooks that we refer to as our math journals, our subscriptions to Think Central for our students to have that online access. And I already mentioned those, some of those manipulatives we have in our classrooms. But with this renewal, each student will get two math boards that come with their math journal. So, again, just some of those big-picture key components that make up math expressions. So now diving in deeper to the learning structures that make up a math expressions classroom, there are five core structures that are seen throughout math expressions learning. One of those being the helping community, taking that idea that all teachers and students in the classroom are learning from each other and working together. You may see students building concepts by drawing their thinking or using manipulatives to show what their understanding looks like. Math talk is a big piece of the math expressions classroom, having students talk about how they're solving problems in different ways and learning from each other. Also, there are prompts right in our math expressions manuals where teachers can guide students to sharing their thinking or engaging in that discourse. Quick practice is that daily, exactly what it says, quick practice of those skills or concepts that we want to keep right at the top of our thinking or that daily practice to keep students fresh on those skills. And student leaders often are the ones that maybe lead that quick practice. So they might be up there at the front of the classroom, guiding the students, asking questions, and having students respond to the questions that they're posing, or having students share their thinking in that format. So those five core structures work together and support each other, enabling all students to learn mathematics at a deep level with understanding, fluency, and confidence. So big picture. Now, when it comes to thinking about concepts and building those skills, we work through the inquiry learning path. So in Phase One, students are guided with instruction. They are explicitly told or taught what they are learning and given the opportunity to share their thinking right from the beginning. Phase Two is where that learning unfolds. So the activities that students are engaging with, they're building conceptual understanding of whatever those concepts are. We know it's important to need that knowledge, meaning build that practice in, so they have their math journal workbooks to practice. Also, that's a place where those whiteboards may come into play. And finally, maintaining and integrating fluency, we want our students to be, have core number sense and be able to build their understanding through having fact power or fact fluency. So now, diving in a little bit deeper, a math expressions lesson includes all of these key components or resources. Of course, our standards, our mathematical practices are at the forefront, the why behind what students are learning in that lesson. Daily quick practice, which I just mentioned, is part of every single math expressions lesson and often led by student leaders. There's the opportunity for math talk and guided learning activities. And maybe not one learning activity, maybe starting with whole group and then having opportunities to bring students together for small group learning. Differentiation, we know, is key, making sure that our students are getting the learning that they need. So that is outlined right in the math expressions manual, as well as supports for our English-language learners. And practice is key. We want to make sure our students have guided practice through our math journals, as well as home connections, so, so families are aware and can continue to support their student at home with the learning that's happening in the classroom. Now, that's all kind of renewal. That's where we're at with our math expressions and have been for a while. But what's even maybe more exciting and a great structure that we were able to put into place this year are math coaches. And they have been instrumental in supporting math instruction at the elementary level, specifically with our resource math expressions. We have math coach support in all eight of our elementary buildings. They work with teachers through coaching cycles, focusing on math instruction and key strategies for strong math instruction. They are reinforcing math expressions, and they love getting in classrooms, modeling lessons, those instructional strategies, best practices, really hands-on opportunities, working with our teachers and our students through that coaching model. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it back over to Marty to ask for all the money.
I'm actually just going to drop back to this slide right here, just because when we were looking at this, this was part of, we included this in our Board TLT Subcommittee discussion. And so we were asking ourselves, should we include this in the overall board presentation? And we decided yes, just because, one, we wanted that opportunity to brag about the work that our math coaches are doing in all the elementary buildings. But two, also because they really are, like Kristin said, reinforcing that math expressions resource and, and, and helping students, teachers, especially newer ones who maybe haven't had as much experience with math expressions, making sure that they understand the best approach to all lessons and so on. And so, we've really noticed the work that they've been doing to, to reinforce the math expressions this year. So that's why we included this slide in there. We wanted to, to, for you to hear that. So the purchase recommendation, we're requesting, again, that, that you approve this three-year contract for math expressions. And again, you will, all students receive a consumable workbook and whiteboard. There's digital platform licenses for students in grades one through five. And then there's digital management center licenses for all teachers in grades K through five. And thank you. And are there any questions?
I'm sure there is. Any questions? Yes, Laura.
I have a lot of opinions about math expressions. As a fifth-grade parent who has been with you all of these years, there's some really great stuff. I love the beginning of the chapter ripouts that come home that explain how it goes, both in English and Spanish. And I have other little things. I will tell you, the hardest thing for me as a parent, as I, as, as my daughter gets smarter, is I think I am getting maybe dumber. Because the, the way I was taught math so many years ago has gone through so many changes until now, that I, I live in constant concern that I'm teaching her when she brings homework home, not the way she's learning in the classroom. And it's really hard for me to know how she's learning in the classroom. So I would ask, we'll, we'll keep with math, math expressions for the next few years, but as you're researching, online tools for parents, so we can actually see what's going on and how exactly we're supposed to take them through the stages. And I know as she gets into middle school math, I'm probably going to need a tutor. So I feel like I'm, I'm ready for this. But it really is, it really is a very different experience that she's having with math than I did a long time ago. And I think that, that practice at home is important. I think all the way through elementary, they're at least bringing something home. And even if it's spend ten, fifteen minutes working on it, we don't care how far you get through this. Honestly, a lot of nights for me and other parents I've talked to are very hard. It's the hardest part about elementary math right now, is you don't do it the way my teacher's doing it, and you don't know what you're doing. And it, it turns to blows. So I would say, you know, that is something I would love to see going forward, is, and actually, I have occasionally taken the exact chapter we're learning and the lesson, and I've Google searched to see what sort of support exists out there to make sure that we're doing it right at home. So that, that's really my two cents about math expressions. Also, the homework pages need more room to write your answers, especially in long division. But I think that maybe that's just a separate piece of paper problem, not a, that problem. So, thanks.
Other comments?
I have the same experiences that you've had. And yeah, one suggestion, because I know my grandchildren's teachers, they know their grandpa's helping them because there's things stapled to the pages, because there's not enough room for them to do everything they need to do. Okay? And my suggestion is, one thing that I found successful is doing some of the things that you've done, trying to stay one step ahead, because I thought I was pretty good at math. I know what the answer is, but how you get there sometimes is a little bit different. The other question I have is, I'm, I'm reading through this. With our literacy, there's, there's, what is 35J? There is categorical monies to help support this. Math is so important. But I don't see any, I see this coming out of the general fund. Is that, that correct? And with that, maybe this is more of a Jeffrey question, maybe, maybe not. You're asking for X amount of dollars for the next three years to continue math. How, how much of an increase is that from the last time? Do we know? Yeah, I, I'd be curious just to, because obviously...
Are you talking about the math expressions per year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is it about the same?
It went up, obviously.
It went up, but it's not a, it's not a huge...
Not a significant, nothing abnormal. Okay. Yeah.
One of the things, too, is math expressions is allowing us to purchase that over three years as well. So we'll make a one-third of a payment next year, another third the following year, and so on.
Gotcha. Gotcha. So the total purchase is three hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars, but it's over a three-year period?
Correct.
Gotcha. The other question I have, all right, we have had literacy coaches for a number of years. Last year, we brought in math coaches. There's a significant difference between a math interventionist than a coach. I'd, I'd be curious, because we know that a lot of that has to do with, with relationships, and there's nothing wrong. You know, I, I just really want to know how that's working out, because this is the first year. I know there are tendencies as it relates to, all of a sudden, I have this extra help. Here are some students that I'm having some difficulties with, as opposed to coaching and facilitating knowledge that benefits all, all children.
Yeah. So one of the things with our literacy coaches or literacy intervention specialists is they're intervention specialists for, I think it's eighty percent of the time, and twenty percent coaching. That is their model. Whereas with our math coaches, they're one-hundred percent coaches, so they're not interventionists. So they're not doing that. What they're doing is they're more working with the teachers, with coaching cycles, maybe assisting with, with a leading approach in a classroom or, or helping support an introduction of a, of a lesson in a, in a classroom. But they're not intervention specialists. And don't forget, they're with, they're in two buildings as well, so they don't have that same exposure that our, our elementary let coaches have, being one per building.
Okay. So, so it is a little bit different model than, obviously, literacy. And they truly are coaches.
Yes.
Working with, with their colleagues to become better math teachers.
Yes.
Okay. And that seems to be working out?
Yeah, we, it's, it's so far, we've been, we've, we've heard a lot of positive things about it. Obviously, it's our first year, and we've seen a lot of areas for growth.
Sure.
And, and we've actually sat down with Paul and talked about goals for next year. And, and I know Kristin and Connie Gilbert, another teacher leader, they met with the math coaches this afternoon, planning for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
They're doing a great job. And it's extraordinarily important for our, it's, it's professional development.
Right.
And, and to bring coaches in. They've, they have a relationship because they, they, they were recently in the classroom. They can demonstrate, they work, this is, this, these are best, best practices. And I, as, if I was a teacher, I would welcome with, welcome them with open arms to make me a better teacher.
And what else is great is, is all four of them were HVS teachers.
Right. Right. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, Doc.
Yeah, just one final thought on that topic. You know, generally speaking, what, what the educational research says is, an individual who attends professional development, and it's more of a sit-and-get. Their, the likelihood that they will take something that they've learned and take it back to their classroom and try to get to full implementation is miniscule. It's like five percent of the time or something. But when you look at a coaching model, like what we're talking about here, imagine having somebody elbow-to-elbow with you, problem-solving, modeling a lesson, and thinking through how you might tackle a really complicated teaching concept, and then be there with you while you're, while you're actually teaching it. And then afterwards, debriefing with you, the, the likelihood of implementation goes up from like five percent to, I sat in a room and just listened to someone talking at me, to like eighty-five to ninety percent. And so, what we're doing was an outgrowth of, of our strategic plan, which is important to note. And the reason why we're going to this coaching model is because we want it, we want to engage in practices that yield an outcome on student achievement. And we know math is an area where we need to, to focus our time and our energy and our effort. So, great job to you guys. I know that it's a continued effort. And I really enjoyed the conversation we had as a follow-up. There's some, there's some room for, for growth, you know, moving from year one to, to year two. And I know the team is really actively engaged in thinking through how we, how we do that. So with that, moving on to our next agenda item, letter D, Board Policy 5500. I know this item has been to the TLT Subcommittee several times. So John, I'll, I'll turn that over to you to, to touch on.
Yeah. And like Dr. Sla shared earlier about board policy updates, this was an update we received from Neola on Board Policy 5500, which is student conduct. The changes primarily in this policy were around academic honesty. There's new language being added for academic honesty. And the other big area was artificial intelligence. And the TLT Committee spent several meetings going back to January, and you'll see those on the exhibit, through January, February, and March. We had a lot of discussion around the use of artificial intelligence in the district. Derek Bod is our Instructional Technology Coordinator, and he came and spoke to the committee about the professional learning that we have done with our staff around artificial intelligence and how we've applied that and its use in the district. So you'll see language in the policy before you this evening that is very much in alignment with our practices as a school district around artificial intelligence. And so, again, this is a new business item tonight, give you an opportunity to read through the language that's presented to you. And again, as Dr. Sla mentioned, this is, we had a lot of discussion at the committee level about how we could write that language so that it really matched not only our practices, but also our educational philosophy as it relates to student conduct. So we are just asking for you to review that over the next few weeks. Certainly reach out if you have any questions around those policies. But I'm happy to take any questions you have this evening.
Any questions? You have this in front of us. We'll review it and reach out to Dr. Sla and you, Mr. Tverneer, as it relates to any questions we might have. Next.
Yep. This, I would just leave this topic by adding to John's comments. This topic was interesting, not only at the committee level, but we also had a lot of internal conversations amongst the administrative team. Because I think the technology's evolving so rapidly, and people are using it so frequently, that the, the initial reaction was outlawed at all costs to now there's a much, a much greater softening of, of sort of that thinking because it's, that's not practical. So I think you'll find a good, a good balance here in the, in the recommended policy language. So I'm curious to hear your, your feedback on that. Next agenda item is computer purchase, and that's located under Exhibit F. And I will ask Mr. Tverneer to touch on this one.
So again, like Mr. Lindberg said, it is that season. And so we are looking at our summer refresh. So I'll invite our Director of Technology, Scott Endicott, to speak to this exhibit.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. This is a pretty standard and routine request. We do this every year. We come up with the number of desktops, laptops, and Chromebooks that need to be replaced. And we come up with numbers, and we get the best deals we can. And then we come to you and say, hey, can we do this? So what we have is, there's an uptick, just, you know, as a brief comparison from last year, uptick of laptop computers. We have an aging fleet, laptop, aging laptop fleet. And there are a couple of things going into, coming into play now. Windows 10 is end of life, so we'll have no more support on Windows 10 next year. So all hardware that will not support Windows 10, Windows 11 as an operating system needs to be replaced. So for instance, last year, we only replaced forty or fifty laptops. This year, we're, we're asking for just under two hundred. So that accounts for that. We bought more desktops last year, so we bought four hundred last year. We're only asking for two hundred and fifty this year. And then Chromebooks, last year, we bought about eighteen hundred. We're only buying thirteen hundred this year. We're replacing everything 2020 and earlier. And what happened in about 2020, you guys might remember, we had a hard time getting things in 2020. So we were a little under, we had enough Chromebooks, but we were really struggling. So then we purchased more in '21, '22, '23, and those aren't being replaced yet. So we're, we're a little bit better for Chromebooks for this year. We, we give new Chromebooks to incoming eighth graders. So those coming from seventh to eighth grade, they get a new Chromebook, and that follows them through the rest of their career at HVS. So we're going to be asking you on the 28th to, to approve the purchase. And in the meantime... And in the meantime, if you have questions tonight or if you have questions in those couple of weeks, feel free to reach out to me. If there's anything, you know, any questions tonight, I'd be happy to address them.
Questions? I think it's important to note that the funding source is Twenty Twenty Capital Projects. It's not coming out of the general fund. It's through the, the support of our community through the passage of the bond issue that this is made possible. If it wasn't, if we did not have this support of our community, we wouldn't be one-on-one or we'd be taken out of the general fund, which has a direct impact on other things within the general fund. So I think it's important to, one, show our appreciation and two, recognize that these are half-two purchases. And these are things that if we didn't have the bond issue, we'd be coming out, we'd have to make some really tough decisions as it relates to the general fund. So I just want to say thank you to that. You have pricing here. The world's changing rapidly. How firm are these quotes?
I was expecting that, that. Actually, we got very aggressive pricing this year. We normally buy off a consortium every year called Spot and Remsy. This year, we're doing it a little bit differently. Those prices went up this year, a certain percentage, I'm not sure. But every, every item here we were purchasing has gone up. We were able to secure pricing from last year with a different consortium. So we're extremely happy about that. In addition, you know, I reached out to our vendor and asked about tariffs. And he, because there are several other vendors and other manufacturers saying we're putting a hold on things coming over, you know, into the U.S. But we've been assured that we're good. We're locked in, pricing is stable and we don't have to worry about it a bit. And I assumed that, you know, that question would come up. So I made a phone call to our rep just to make sure. So I was given every assurance that we should be good with these prices.
What about delivery?
I haven't heard of any, you know, extended, I think we're a few weeks out, just a normal process. It's not, I don't think there's any supply chain issues to speak of.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. We have two weeks. Please review this. Any other questions? Follow the process. Next.
Okay. So we are on Letter F. I know this item has gone to both TLT and Finance and Operations. I believe John Turrner is the lead on this one.
Yeah. All right. So this is the last exhibit this evening from TLT. But we have a great opportunity with our GSRP, which is our Great Start Readiness Program, Preschool Program at Apollo Center. And Jennifer Kidd unfortunately had a conflict tonight and wasn't able to be here to speak to this this evening. She is our Director of Early Childhood. So just a little bit of background on the GSRP Startup Grant. This is a grant that came to us from Oakland Schools because last fall, we actually increased our enrollment at GSRP. We had previously sixteen students in each of our five classrooms. And this year, we increased that to eighteen students per classroom, which was approved by Oakland Schools. And because that was more than a ten percent increase overall with our number of seats that we have available for GSRP, we were eligible for an expansion grant. And that grant was a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And through the fall and winter, our GSRP team has been working with Oakland Schools to determine what's allowable, what can be purchased for with this grant. And it really comes down to professional development, facility improvements, outreach, cost of support, expansion of the classrooms, including materials within the classroom and furniture. And so the team is recommending, they put together their requests for this grant, submitted that to Oakland Schools. We just got the approval back from Oakland Schools for the budget expenditures. And so we're bringing that before you this evening for your consideration. You'll see indoor, outdoor furniture, creative play materials and professional learning and curriculum materials for our staff. So that was all included for you in your packet. But if you have any questions around this purchase request, certainly happy to take those questions back to Jennifer Kidd and get the, get that information back to you. But we are asking for your consideration and we'll bring that back at April twenty-eighth for approval.
Lot of items. Any questions? GSRP, Great Start, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
When we talked in Finance and Operations, we didn't have a quote yet through the MAC Consortium. And I see now that this is through the MAC.
It is. Yes.
And that means we're getting a great price, right?
We are getting a competitive price. So they, Lakeshore, which Lakeshore Learning Materials, which is a vendor we're working through for, for this, is part of a MAC Consortium. So they were able to re-quote this for us.
Great. Great catch. Thank you. Any other questions? GSRP, Great Start Readiness Program. What students are we talking about?
Yeah. So this is our preschool students. This is for eligible students, income eligible students in, that are four-year-olds.
Four-year-olds.
Yep, before.
And if you qualified for GSRP, how, how many days a week or?
So our GSRP program runs four days a week at the Apollo Center and they follow the, the school calendar.
And they follow the school calendar. I see our grant's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. You're leaving, what, seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars on, or, yeah, well, a little bit less than that.
Yeah, so that's for.
Twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars.
That's for our professional learning.
Oh, is it?
For the training for our staff.
Yeah, I don't like.
And high scope curriculum materials as well.
We got a grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I know I was speaking on behalf of Jeffrey. He doesn't like leaving money out, not spent.
So they have budgeted the full hundred and twenty-five thousand, but this was for the material.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Just want to make sure we're not giving money back. All right. Next, Dr. Sloss.
Okay, we're going to keep rolling here onto Letter G, Be Pack Thirteen Furnishings, Exhibit H, and Mr. Van Goghtham will take this one.
Thank you, Dr. Sloss. So as Ms. Grisimskowski alluded to early from our Finance and Operations Subcommittee meeting, we talked a little bit about the furniture needs for our new spaces or our updated spaces at Lakeland and Milford as well as for White Lake for the upcoming school year. And so again, this furniture is a part of our MAC Service Consortium, our co-op that we are partners in. And we received pricing from that. And we are asking for a total of three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars at the next board meeting. So this gives everybody an opportunity to look at the furnishings that we're thinking about considering. And again, I'm happy to take any questions this evening or over the next couple of weeks before we, before we have you guys vote on this.
Great. You have the information in front. Do you have any questions, anybody on the board right now? All right. Once again, follow the process over the next couple of weeks. Next.
So Letter H, we've had several conversations with the Finance and Operations Committee. Jeffrey and I have been working with White Lake Township on potential of an easement on the Brooks Center. Jeffrey, I'll let you speak to some of the details related to that specific easement.
Yeah. So several months ago, we were approached by the business owners who are planning on a rather large subdivision, which would be to the north and to the west of where our Brooks Center currently lies. And so they needed a small easement from us on our northeast corner of our property. We had an opportunity to walk that space, take a look at what they would be possibly needing. Again, it's not impeding on what we would do with the building. Now we're into the future. So we asked, in lieu of giving them an easement, that they provide us a water line down to the Brooks Center so we could tap that into our building and then have another location within the district that has water and not a, like a well pump. So they were happy to do that. We went back and forth on some of the wording, had to take it through the attorneys. Dr. Sloss and I both have an opportunity to review this and it's, it's ready to go. But following the process, we're going to put this under new business tonight. And as for final approval, I know the owner's anxious to get moving on his space because this easement will help him not only, it'll help him further develop the water portion of his property development here over the next, I would think, couple of years because it's a pretty big subdivision that they're thinking about putting in over there. So happy to take some questions this evening or again, over the next couple of weeks before we ask for a final vote on it.
Any questions? The easement does not interfere with any future use as it relates to the Brooks Center because we know that the plan, the strategic plan is to move that program over that's being housed at the Brooks Center to Oak Valley.
Yeah, no, sir. Even if we do different things or pursue other opportunities with respect to that space, it will not impede any of that.
In fact, we think it actually adds value to the property. So it's, it's only a benefit.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Dr. Sloss.
Yeah, we have board policy. This is Item I, Board Policy Update Eighty Five Hundred, Exhibit J. And it's a food service-related policy. I know this has been to, also been to Finance and Operations. Jeffrey, anything to, that you'd like to add specific to this policy?
Yeah, I wish I could tell you that it was about like, you know, something that would inspire the foodies in our, our district. But it really just comes down to some language changes with specific to dietary modifications and, you know, disability accommodations, really some added language, more so than, than a trimming of a lot of language. And so just a lot of light reading for you on a casual day that you decide to do so. And again, this will be new business tonight and then it'll be unfinished business in a couple of weeks. Happy to take questions about it. But I asked that you take a look at the policy. And again, this is a board policy, not an administrative guideline. So, you know, we've had a chance to review it and then discuss it a little bit in Finance and Operations. But this is again, just a first reading this evening. And if you see something in there that we have some questions about or in regards, we're happy to take those as we look at it.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions right now? Not, it'll be brought back two weeks from Saturday.
All right. Next, J and K, I'll take those. Upon, the first one is J, Contract Non-Renewal for Deb Parkinson. Upon completion of the comprehensive review of our Student Support Services Department by Empowered Ed Solutions, the recommendation of, of a restructure for the administrative team has been implemented for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. As a result of the restructuring of the Student Support Services Administrative Team, Deb Parkinson's position of Assistant Director is being eliminated. The administration is recommending the non-renewal of Deb Parkinson's contract effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This will align with the position elimination in the new structure of the administrative team. The resolution regarding the non-renewal of administrative contract of employment as required by law. Whereas Deb Parkinson is presently employed by the Huron Valley Schools pursuant to an individual employment contract that expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And whereas the administrator has been previously provided written notification that this Board of Education is considering the non-renewal of the employment contract with the Huron Valley Schools, including a statement of the reasons therefore. And whereas the administration has also provided with written notice of the right to meet with not less than a majority of the members of the Board of Education to discuss the reason or reasons contained within said written notification closed session meeting that was held tonight at five o'clock, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Now therefore, be it resolved that, one, this Board of Education hereby determines that the administrative contract of Deborah Parkinson shall not be renewed beyond the present expiration date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five due to the reasons set forth within the aforementioned written notice of consideration of non-renewal. And, two, the superintendent or designate provides said administrator with notice of contract non-renewal, including a copy of this resolution no later than sixty days before the expiration of the administration employment contract. I'm asking for a, a motion and a second prior to any discussion if we might have.
I'll make, I'll move that the Board of Education approve the contract non-renewal for Deb Parkinson as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Member Dodd, seconded by Member Grisimskowski. As I said, this was something that the administrator requested a closed session and we met with that individual prior to the regular meeting tonight. Seeing no discussion, could I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Ms. Grisimskowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Demick.
Yes.
And Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, K, Contract Non-Renewal for Rachel.
Parity.
Parity. Thank you. Upon the completion of comprehensive review of our Student Support Services Department by Empowered Ed Solutions, the recommendation of a restructure for the administrative team has been implemented for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. As a result of the restructuring of the Student Support Administrative Team, Rachel Parity's position of Assistant Director is being eliminated. Administration is recommending the non-renewal of Rachel Parity's contract effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This will align with the position elimination in new structure of the administration team. Resolution regarding the non-renewal of the administrator's contract of employment. Whereas Rachel Parity is presently employed by the Huron Valley Schools pursuant to an individual employment contract that expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And whereas the administrator has previously been provided written notification that this Board of Education is considering the non-renewal of the employment contract with the Huron Valley Schools, including a statement of the reason or reasons therefore. And whereas the administration, whereas the administrator has been, also been provided with written notice of the right to meet with not less than a majority of the members of the Board of Education to discuss the reason or reasons contained within said written notification and closed session meeting held tonight, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Now therefore, it be resolved that, one, this Board of Education hereby determines that the administrative contract of Rachel Parity shall not be renewed beyond the present expiration date of June twenty, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, due to the reasons set forth with the aforementioned written notice of consideration of non-renewal. And, two, the superintendent or designate provides said administrator with written notice of contract non-renewal, including a copy of this resolution no later than sixty days before the expiration of the administrative employment contract. May have a motion and a second.
Yes. Due to the elimination of the position, I recommend that we approve a non-renewal for the contract for Rachel Parity.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Member Dodd, seconded by Member Ryan.
McCotter.
I'm sorry. Why did I look at you?
I don't know.
Let me restate that. Motion made by Member Cotter and seconded by Member Ryan. Any discussion? Seeing none, could I have a roll call?
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grisimskowski.
Yes.
Mr. Demick. Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
I am a yes. And Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next on the agenda, Section Seven, Public Comments on Non-Action Items If Needed. Are there any? Are there any comments made by the public? Seeing none, we'll go to Good in Welfare. I'm sure there's going to be some Good in Welfare. Amy?
It's time to shout out the arts. I had the opportunity to go to Lakeland High School for their All Shook Up Musical. It was fantastic. It is, it was just a great time, very, just phenomenal performances. It wasn't just the people on the stage. It was the sound, the lights, the, they had a band come in. They were just fantastic. I give big kudos to our kids and to Becky Hugaboom and Dr. Nelson over there. It was a really great time. The audience really loved it and our students just shined. I also had the opportunity to go to Lakeland and they had a, some senior interviews as part of their ELA curriculum. And that was also great because every one of those students I would have hired. They were really fantastic interviewees and really brought their A-game. So well done, Lakeland.
Anyone else? Denise?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to go to the Blessings in a Backpack fundraiser on Saturday night. The Optimists put it on and it was pretty successful. There was a hundred and seventy-five people. I think they raised a lot of money and it was a good turnout. Everybody cared about feeding kids. So, yeah, it was really good. And I would suggest next year, somebody accompany me because it was a good time. All right, bye.
I heard that, was it comedy tonight?
Yeah.
You know, any good jokes?
Yeah, it was comedy. There were some good jokes. None that I can repeat right now.
All right. Very good. Any other Good in Welfare? One quick one. I think tonight's board meeting really demonstrated why we are AAA school district. You think we, we really talked about three areas that we're very proud of. The academic piece, when we talk about the math, coaches and literacy. We talked about the athletics with our, with our Milford accolades and our young men. We talked about the arts during Good in Welfare. I also think that reflecting back on my day today, I had a conversation with a, a person in our community as it relates to learning. And how do we know kids are learning? And you think about it. You think about the things that we talked about today. And one of the, one of the hallmarks is to be able to demonstrate your knowledge and your learning. You think about our Spring Mills Wax Museum, young people, they're really demonstrating what they've learned and how they learned without many of them knowing that they are learning, right? And I was learning because I had an opportunity to listen to them. We're, our athletes demonstrated their abilities through their coaching. Our athletes demonstrated their abilities through their coaching and through the opportunities that they had with our unified team. And you think about our hot robotics. I can't think of anything more as it relates to demonstrating learning than that hot robotics. And really, that hot robotics really takes in all three of those areas as a school district because robotics is not just academics. It's, it's, it's an art, what they're doing. And, and, and they need to be very athletic as, as it relates to doing what they're doing and to be able to demonstrate it. So I know that I, along with the rest of the board, and Dr. Sloss and the administrative team is very proud of our young people and what they do. So keep up the good work. I know it's April, we're heading towards the, the end of the year, but every day is a new day, and every day is an opportunity to learn something new. So thank you very much. And with that, meeting is adjourned.